All right, we're good to go.
No, very, very good. Okay, thanks, Shane. All right, so being six thirty on Wednesday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty five, and have a quorum, I'll call the Bridgewater Planning Board to order. This meeting is being held via Zoom, so remote participation is encouraged. There's no in-person attendance. A lot of this evening are happening this evening. Everything's being done remotely. We ask that if this is a public hearing and you have a public comment that you raise your hand or ask a question via the chat, and just state your name and address before asking a question. The following, the following planning board members participating this evening, I'm Patrick Driscoll, the chair. Mr. Michael McDonald's not with us yet. Mr. Steven Geller is with us, Mr. Tom Praddy. And it looks about as you said, then we have a new associate joining us this evening, Mr. Chris John Fabroski. From town staff, we have Mr. Shane O'Brien and Mr. Robert Ruley. I don't see Mr. Solario or Mr. Tansy tonight.
Mr. Tansy will not be able to make it, and I don't believe Mr. Solari will be here.
Okay, so those are the introductions, and that's how the meeting is going to proceed. Item two, we have a site plan review. This is a public hearing. This is ten ten Elm Street. This is map thirty lot twenty. Map thirty lot twenty, it's a site plan under ten point six with the construction of a twenty seven thousand square foot commercial building with parking and other improvements. A continuance was requested until July sixteenth, twenty twenty five. Is there any discussion on this from the board? If there's none, do we have a motion to continue this to July sixteenth? By Mr. Geller, second by Mr. Praddy, is that all right?
That's fine.
So I'll take the role. So there's Mr. Geller, Mr. Praddy, Mr. McDonald is still not with us, correct?
Correct, it would be you and Chris.
Okay. Okay, Jay, we're gonna throw you right into the stew, ready to participate? So, okay, I'll take the role. Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Praddy?
Yes.
Mr. Fabroski?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so this is item three. We have a request for lot releases and setting a bond amount. This is Wampinoga Estates, AKA Hiawatha Trail. Is anybody from the applicant available this evening? I see Mr. Cutter has his hand up. Mr. O'Brien, if you wanna?
Sure, I think he is, you can talk, Jeff.
I should be unmuted.
Yep.
I don't have much to add. Mr. Tansy went over the.
Yeah, we have, we have, we have the bond calculation that he sent us. It.
I can bring it up on the screen.
You know, the last page didn't print off. I think it was like two hundred and thirty six some thousand.
It is. I can pull that up just so we have.
So we had all the items, and then he had a fifty percent contingency. And it was two hundred. When I looked at it earlier, it was two hundred and thirty something thousand.
Yeah, let me just share my screen. They moved.
Mr. Cutter, just to, just as a reminder, one of the lots was already released for a model home, correct?
One lot you did release, yes, so just to be for the remainder, which is eleven lots.
Yep, so we released lot two, and that has received a building permit.
Okay. Has that started that project?
Yes.
For my, for my understanding, yes. So on the screen, we do have the, the amount set by town engineer. So the big highlighted number is two hundred and thirty six thousand, three hundred and seventy nine dollars and sixty four cents, as well as acknowledgement of the non-refundable detention base and maintenance fee. That's not, you know, as part of that bond amount. So we keep that, and it goes towards maintenance at some point. So we'd be setting it based on that amount. We'd do something like we did a couple of years ago where we would write up a lot release. I'd have board members sign it, have it notarized. And until we get that check, we don't provide that lot release to the applicant until that surety's received, so.
Man, this, this was done by Mr. Tansy, and just to be clear, this is gonna be a cash bond, correct, Shane?
That would be correct.
All right, does anybody on the board have any questions before we set the bond amount for Wampinoga Estates? In the amount of two hundred and thirty six, three hundred and seventy nine dollars and sixty four cents? And Shane, we'll like, you know, what we'll do is we'll just release the remaining building lots and the open space and stuff will remain with us until this proper. Is there, is there anything in the decision, Shane, as to when that open spaces needs to be deeded to either an HOA or to a wildland trust or anything? Because typically, in the older decisions, it had to be done at a certain point in the project before building permits or lots. Does it say anything about that?
I would have to look into the decision if. I don't believe so, but I think there was some acknowledgement of some tree clearing and stuff, but I'll check into it right now.
So Mr. Cutter, is that, I know that, that if I remember correctly, that open space board is riverfront, correct? And I know wildland trust has taken a couple of those parcels down the street. Have you had any conversations with them or anybody else to manage the open space?
I've not had any conversations with any of, with anyone regarding what you just mentioned.
How many acres is that open space? It's more than twenty, isn't it, I believe, if I recall? That abouts the riverfront.
I believe our total property is approximately twenty or twenty one.
Okay.
I don't have it in front of me. I wasn't prepared for that.
Yeah, just saying, the one, the one thing we need to make sure of is before we release all lots, that there's no contingency that the open spaces be done at a certain phase. And I know like on Magnolia, for example, it was supposed to be done by the forty ninth house. And nobody paid attention to that. We released all the lots, they built all the houses, and then it was the problem at the end.
Um, I have, I have it. Let me, let me acknowledge this. So, um, I guess we'll just acknowledge it as part of this, the meeting. Number twenty seven does acknowledge a document for the transfer of open space shall be submitted to the planning board and recorded at the registry. And the transfer of the ownership of the open space shall be completed prior to the issuance of the ninth building occupancy permit. So that condition would be based on that, and then the town.
Yeah.
Down at Bridgewater shall have the right of first refusal for that.
All right, so I just want to make it very clear, and we'll have to notify Mr. Solari of this because typically, this has been missed in the past. And then later on, it becomes a problem. So how many building lots are there total?
Twelve.
So before the ninth, before you can close out the ninth, just to be very clear and on the record, because it comes fast, and then people come to us and say they don't have it done. That there needs to be a plan for that open space, so deed restriction, wildland trust, something of that nature, okay?
Um, Shane, you want to review this at some point? You and I can get together and review this?
Yeah, I'm assuming at some point, too, you're gonna look for a bond reduction as well, but we'll just keep reminding you at every step of the way that we see. But yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll keep track of this. I'll keep track of this. So, you know, as, as we progressively get through occupancy permits for this project, we'll do something similar to what we did with Old Field Estates, which also used kind of a parameter where we, you know, counted down each of the occupancy permits and acknowledged some of the conditions met by the board as part of that.
Yeah, and it just, you know, it just, it takes a lot longer than people think, and it happens fast, so.
Can I just add something, please?
Sure.
It's either gonna have to be Wildland Trust or the HOA. The town is not going to be responsible for the open space requirements.
And I, I agree, but it could be the, it could be an HOA with the holder of the restriction.
Yeah, either, either or. I just want to make sure that Mr. Cutter doesn't think the town is gonna be holding it.
You might want to reach out, you might want to reach out to, oh, God, with Sean McFadden, I think it's Sean McFadden, Shane?
Scott McFadden, yeah.
Scott McFadden, Wildland Trust.
He's, he's great, and I mean, he'll, they have been trying to acquire assemblage along the river there. They just took Old Field last week. They took Magnolia a couple of weeks ago. They filed the deed restriction on, last week on, on Old Field. So, all right, so just pay attention to that.
An HOA might be problematic because, you know, it's a town-accepted road, and there's also the drainage area, which we're, we're putting up a certain amount of money for the, and the town is, I guess, taking responsibility for that as well. So it might get complicated, it might be tough.
Yeah, well, in the past, we can form a off the drainage basin if we need to. So just, just, I just wanted to bring this up. We don't have to talk about it anymore, that it, it, it it becomes a problem, and then everybody says they don't know about it. So we just want to make sure you know about it.
Thank you for letting me know, and I'll follow up with Shane offline.
Okay, we had a, we had a motion and a second. Was that correct?
Uh, no, that was a motion and a second on ten ten Elm Street. So I don't, we haven't said it yet.
All right, so we have, we have a recommendation from Mr. Tansy for two hundred and thirty nine, seven hundred and thirty four.
Nope, two hundred, two hundred and thirty six thousand, three hundred and seventy nine and sixty four cents.
Right, so I wrote it down. All right, so do we have a, a motion to accept that bond amount and release the remaining eleven building lots only?
Some move.
By Mr. Geller? Do we have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Praddy? Any discussion? So I'll take the role. Mr. Geller?
Yes.
Mr. Fabroski?
Yes.
Mr. Praddy?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. So Shane, you need a bond, on a covenant release, you need three signatures out of the five?
Yes, so I'll write that up, and then whichever three board members rush in to sign it.
And you, and you probably don't have Mr. Fabroski on file yet with the registry, right?
Um, no.
So we, so we need Mr. Geller, myself, and Mr. Praddy, right?
Sure thing.
Next, okay. So just shoot us an email when that's ready to go.
Will do.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cutter.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item four, this is a request for release from covenant and discussion of Jennifer Circle pertaining to, to eight hundred and eighty four Cell Street and for Jennifer Circle, the A and R plans. Is there anybody here from the applicant?
I'm here, Lucas Clem. I don't know if you can hear me.
Yeah, we can hear you, Lucas. Go ahead.
For the record, Lucas Clem from Clem Lancer Vang. This isn't so much about the A and R as during the transfer process. One of the, oh, actually, can I share my screen?
Uh, yeah, let me set it up so you can.
I can kind of show you these things here.
Please do.
Let's see. Shane? All right, this. And this. Let's see, all right, if we can see those here. So back in, when Jennifer Circle was created, it was originally called Kitty Lou's Circle. It was a sixteen lot subdivision. And on that subdivision plan, there was actually two, three different parcels, a parcel A, a parcel B, and a parcel C. The covenant, basic, the Form D covenant that the planning board at the time, back in nineteen ninety one, referenced this subdivision plan, which entailed all of those lots plus the three parcels. Subsequently, when they did the Form E release, that release only referenced lots one through sixteen on Jennifer Circle and neglected to include parcel A, B, and C. It's never been an issue for the last thirty five years. There's been plenty of formas done on that property, transactions as far as, you know, more formas along Jennifer Circle, but the new title attorney feels that this is something we should get cleaned up, just to kind of take care of this. So we're here before you, just to see if we can get that Form E either revised or a new Form E to reference parcels A, B, and C. It's shown on this plan right here.
Shane, I, I guess my question is, is so Lucas, this, somebody, you own part of parcel C now, but two other people also on parcel C, correct?
Correct, yep, that is, if I can show.
There's a house on Jennifer Circle now that was.
Correct, five Jennifer Circle as well as.
As well as there's a house off of Winter Street, right?
Correct, yep.
And then, and then this house is on parcel B now, there's like, there's five or six formas there, right?
Yep, that's these ones here that are shown on this, this Form A plan. And then these are roughly what this Form A was done back in ninety four, that has the forty Winter Street, fifteen Jennifer, and lots C here was five Jennifer. So there's been hundreds of transactions that have taken place, but this one title attorney feels that this is something that should be cleaned up.
But they were never really part of the subdivision, so they really shouldn't have been in the, in the, in the release, correct?
That was exactly our argument, you know, especially how do you put a, a, a building restriction on a lot that already has a building on it, that type of thing? So my attorney is here too, Andrew Golden, if you have any kind of legal questions, he could probably answer those as well.
Well, I guess my only question is, Shane, I mean, this is introduced tonight, and it's, it seems to me to be more of a legal issue, and it affects other people's lands. I just don't want to put the town in a bad position. Is this something we should just have Attorney Rollins look at and okay before we release anything?
I would leave it up to the board. Let me just, I want to share my screen too, because I had to dig through some old files. Luckily, Les Door took wonderful information down. So Jennifer Circle, I did find, you know, we received a bond amount in nineteen ninety two. And they kind of moved quickly in terms of a lot of releases, you know, we received that monies in nineteen ninety two, where all lots were released as, as the covenant. The Form E acknowledges, as it says in the registry of deeds. I couldn't find any minutes that would acknowledge that an action performed or specified what was supposed to be included or what wasn't included. However, the town did accept the roadway in ninety four, as well as released all monies. So I, I lean towards the, to the notion that it was more so a Scrivener's error, or, you know.
I don't think it was a Scrivener's error because it was never in the covenant, right? So there's nothing to release.
Right, it was acknowledging that, yeah, they were kind of outside the covenant.
That's, that's what he said. The, the titles attorney is arguing that while it preferences the whole plan, and those parcels are shown on the plan, so that's, that's his argument, but I agree with you, Pat.
And I actually talked to Paul Sancotta today, because they did the subdivision, and then if you look, Sean Dunn, who wasn't even part of Shabz and Sancotta, came and formed that parcel C later on, and CNC Realty Trusted. I, I don't even, so I just, I'm, I just think we just need to get our attorney to okay, because it was, how do we release something that was never in the covenant? Right? It's a covenant release, and it was never in the covenant, right?
Yeah, so the, if you read the covenant here, this Form D, the only thing it says is, it just references that whole plan. So that's, that's the only.
It references that Kitty Lou's plan, right?
Correct, yep, that shows parcel A, B, and C. So that's why the, the other attorney is arguing that it is in it, because if you see here, this, you know, references this plan by Holmgren, basically plan number seventeen of nineteen ninety two, which is right here, Plan Seventeen of Ninety Two, and it shows the A, B, and C. So that's, that's where the hangup is.
Are the board members have questions? So Mr. Clem? No, I just, I, I don't have a problem with it. I just, it's a legal thing, and I just, it's a title issue, and we're just seeing it, and we weren't, I just, I just think it might be best just to run it through our attorney, just to make sure it's.
I would agree with that. I mean, you know, the, the map controls, so whatever map reference they are, whether it's parcel A, B, or C, and all those other lots, that, that's the controlling document. So I agree with you, Mr. Driscoll, that let's talk to Mr. Rollins about it.
Probably not a big deal, but I just don't think we should sign a legal document without having an attorney advise us, that's all.
Right. So based on that, we can send it over to Jason. I guess it's just a matter of, you know, his, how quickly he comes back with something, or whether it be the, the next meeting, July sixteenth or before then. If the board has some openness to maybe having a quick special meeting in terms of finding out what Mr. Rollins says, if, you know, he has some concerns, and I guess, you know.
Lucas, do you need, do you need it before July sixteenth?
Well, we were supposed to have a closing this Friday, of course, and, you know, the attorney just brought it up, so, you know, speed is of the essence.
This Friday is not gonna happen.
Yeah, I, I kind of figured.
Why don't we send it to our town attorney? And if he gives us an opinion before the sixteenth, we can see who's available for a meeting and schedule it.
Yeah, I don't even, this is probably a question for the attorneys, if it even would need to be at a meeting, but.
We'll get your legal opinion, we'll get, well, we'll get, I'll get a legal opinion for the planning board and.
Who signs the covenant, Shane?
Who signed the covenant?
You or me or the?
It was all, all board. It was ex, well, the covenant was executed by the owners at the time, the Liam Brunos. So, you know, we, we acknowledge the, we, we sign off on the releases, but typically with like other covenants, we don't have any signature on it. There's just a notary as well as the owners of the property, you know, we just get a copy of the release or the copy.
So you guys are gonna prepare some sort of a document for us to consider, or would we create that?
It would be, it would be the Form E. So it would either be the fact that we would have to acknowledge on the Form E that parcels one through three are released as well, or it doesn't need to be included based on, you know, the attorney's interpretation of the matter, that, that lots one through sixteen, that those parcels are covered through it, or not included in the covenant.
Yeah, I, like I said, it's probably fine. I just think it's a legal document, and we're asking, there's other people that could be involved. I think we should just make sure that Jason sees it.
Sure thing, we can send him an email and go from there, or sit down with him and talk to him.
But I guess my question though, Shane, who votes on the covenant release? The board, right?
Yeah, for any lot releases, that would be any board member. It doesn't have to be old planning board members of the time. It's whoever's currently before the board.
But you sign the release, or do I sign the release?
It would be, it would be board members signing the release. So similar to what we just discussed with Hiawatha, it'd be three or four board members and someone to notarize it, and that would be recorded at the registry of deeds.
Yeah, we'll send it to Jason tomorrow, and if, if, just to work with the applicant, if we get something back soon and board members are available, we can schedule a meeting just for this.
Sure thing.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so go on, item four, other business, Shane. What do we have for minutes for me now? I just haven't been keeping up.
So we have February fifth, February nineteenth, as well as the May twentieth site visit. The site visit was pretty standard language. So March nineteenth, I've not completed yet, but I would hope for a motion to approve at least those minutes that I just stated.
Okay, so does everybody have, is everybody comfortable making, anybody comfortable making a motion to approve February fifth, twenty twenty five?
I think the only people that can vote on the minutes are you and Mr. Geller, right?
Well, Mr. Praddy was at the May twentieth site visit.
I see he was, yeah.
I was not.
Mr. Costa was, right?
That's right. But I guess the big question, could you prove minutes if you're not in attendance?
I think you can, but it's, it's, if we can defer this meeting if you want.
Um.
Do you want to do, you want to try to get the old ones out of the way, the February fifteenth and if it's in nineteen?
Yeah, I would at least, because they, those minutes were forwarded to all board members, so, yeah, if we can.
And we could do Mr. Praddy, Mr. Fabroski could abstain, right? And that would be.
That'd be two, two, that's the thing, yeah. It's, it's, it's all right. We can push it to another meeting to the July ones, but.
You have, if somebody needed minutes, you have draft minutes.
I can provide with the anticipation of FOIA request at any minute. We do have draft, and as, as well as all these meetings are recorded, so someone can verbally see every action.
And was that a joke, or are you anticipating a FOIA request?
We get more than usual nowadays.
Yeah.
Do you?
They have a frequent flyer.
Do, do you want to approve some then?
No, it's not a big deal. If it's in a draft format, it's fine. Like I said, we have YouTube videos of all these meetings, but i- if it comes to the comfort of the board and having Eric and Michael here, as they were attending, attended some of these meetings, I'm fine with that.
Mr. Praddy, were you on in February? You were not, correct?
Was not.
All right, so I think we should, if, if, if Mr. Praddy was on, we probably shouldn't.
That's fine.
Okay, but you, you have the draft ones, okay. Items to next meeting, July the sixteenth or eighteenth?
Uh, sixteenth. So we have no meeting the first week of July, just because of Fourth of July and scheduling, and historically, we haven't had one, but we'll probably see ten ten Elm Street. They're hitting some hiccups through conservation, to no fault of conservations, as well as we do have a application before us that I'm waiting for a check for, so that one might be on for that agenda. We do anticipate Claremont's coming back for the updated plans for the hotel. An acknowledgement of the board's decision of the eighty feet in landscaping, so we're anticipating that to be on the sixteenth, as well as some other.
That, I heard that was appealed with Concom. Is that out of appeal?
Uh, I don't believe it has. I haven't gotten any acknowledgement of any.
They're, they're coming forward with their landscape plan.
All right, that's good. All right. All right, um, so, and then the other thing to keep in mind, Shane, is if we get a Form A, we have to have a special meeting anyway?
Correct.
Between now, because that's a month, right?
Yep, so any formas in between.
So if we get any formas along with Mr. Clem's request, we can maybe package him for a special meeting?
Sure, I'll, we can anticipate maybe potentially having a special meeting in between that time.
In that way, you know.
I'll keep, keep you on your toes.
For staff reports, it's only you and Bob, right? Any reports?
I just want everyone to know that for better or for worse, I mean, Shane and his wife are expecting their second child sometime in July, so we're, we're trying to get everything teed up as much as we can, so I can just push buttons, but.
On the record, for, on the record for better, just in case my wife acknowledges the minutes and watches these.
And then Shane, just, we should connect before, when, when do you anticipate being out?
It would be tomorrow.
Uh, I'm hoping sometime in July. Due date is one of the first weeks and second week of July, but it could be anytime.
All right, so most likely, you're not gonna be at the sixteenth meeting then.
Correct, I will prob, I will definitely not be at the sixteenth.
Okay, on the sixteenth, and then you won't be at anything in August either.
I, well, we, we shall see. So, but yeah, definitely not the sixteenth, but I'll tee you guys up. And you're in good hands, so don't anticipate any issues. We've done this before. This isn't my first kid. You guys have had meetings without me, so.
And the other thing too is we can, if we want, meet in person, correct?
No, you have to meet virtually.
We still can't meet in person?
No, I mean, the governor extended the, the virtual meeting, so, I mean, we, we, we don't have any choice on that, so the meetings have to be virtual.
But that's, that's a town thing, not a, not a state thing. The most, a lot of boards are meeting in person.
Right.
So when the new town manager gets here in July, we should see what he wants to do, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely a conversation that we can have with Justin for sure, but as it stands now, there's no precedent to have in-person meetings.
So the anticipation is that July sixteenth, twenty twenty five, that means it's gonna be in Zoom.
Okay. Well, I just think maybe if you're out, it might be easy to have them in person if people are available, you know? I'd like, you know, and we'll talk to Justin when he gets here, but.
But you still have to allow for virtual participation. You can't have a meeting exclusively in person.
So how does, so how does, how does, how council do that then? That they meet on Monday?
They allow for, the way that they do it is that they have people from BTV there. People can zoom in if they needed to, if the council members needed to. I'm not saying it's perfect or that I agree with it, Steve, but, I mean, the governor's order is that you have to allow for virtual participation. So for us, it's, it's more of a logistics issue.
Yeah. And we are like one of the only states that is still doing this like this. It's, it's.
I think one of the, I think one of the only towns, too.
Seriously, I, I mean, I, I end up going to meetings all the time now in person. Seriously, I, I mean, I, I end up going to meetings all the time now in person.
Right. All right, and I'd like to get back some of them later, but for July sixteenth, we'll keep it on Zoom because we have to set the agenda before Mr. O'Brien goes away. And then let's talk to the new town manager. They should be here in twelve days, so. All right?
All righty. Uh, other than that, um.
How about a decision for Broad Street from CED? Has that been completed yet? Do, can we get a copy of that?
So I finalized, yeah, I finalized uh the checklist, which is part of the decision, so we're just. Drafting up the decision language, but once it's given to the clerk's office, I'm happy to forward along to the board.
Yeah. Anything else? Anything from board members? Any public comment? Motion to adjourn?
I move.
And Mr. Geller, do we have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Praddy? Any discussion? I'll take the role, Mr. Fabroski?
I mean.
Mr. Praddy?
Uh, yes.
The Geller?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. All right, good night, everybody. Happy fourth. Well, maybe, maybe, so Shane, keep us in the loop with Form A's and um. The attorney's decision.
Okay, no meetings on the fourth of July, though. All right. Take care, guys.
All right.